All right, background. At the November tenth meeting, council scheduled a work session to discuss the hours of operations for Cascade Lock City Hall. While this topic has been raised in previous meetings, no formal discussion has taken place since then. On August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, council approved a six-month trial of a four-day work week, which began October second, twenty twenty-three. City Hall operational hours were set from six thirty A M. to six P M. Monday through Thursday. All administrative staff worked four-ten hours matching those hours with a thirty-minute lunch break. Public Works and Electric Department staff worked from six A M. to four thirty P M., also with a thirty-minute lunch break. On March eleventh, twenty twenty-four, council made the four-day work week permanent by reviewing and adopting updated employee handbook, which detailed work schedules, holiday schedules, and other changes related to the new schedule. Why the change? The change to a four-day work week was requested for four primary reasons. One, community needs. Cascade Locks is a bedroom community. The vast majority of residents of Cascade Locks do not work in Cascade Locks. Previous office hours from nine A M. to five P M. limited the city's availability to meet the residents who left for work before nine A M. And returned after five P M. The extended hours were intended to meet the residents where they were at. Two, operational efficiency. Depending on the type of work and the work setting, a four-day work week was intended to save time and increase efficiency. It is most pronounced in the Public Works and Electric Department. Again, dependent upon the work each department takes. Each department takes thirty to sixty minutes to mobilize and demobilize each day. In a five-day work week, eight hours a day, five, eight hours a day schedule, that leaves six to seven hours of work each day, a total of thirty to thirty-five hours of work per week. In a four-ten schedule, the mobilization and demobilization times do not change, but the number of times does. In a four-ten schedule, staff are working on a project thirty-two to thirty-six hours. The process within an office setting is not as dramatic, but saves roughly two hours per week. Three, staff recruitment, retention, and morale. Due to the city's location, lack of housing, and comparative with lower salaries, especially for salaried positions in within Electric Department, staff recommended moving to a four-day work week to attract applicants with the benefit of a three-day weekend and to assist in retaining current staff. Lack of Friday traffic. For six weeks, staff tracked foot and phone traffic leading up to the change to a four-day work week. On average, each of those Fridays saw one person physically visit City Hall and less than five phone calls. Additional benefits included lower facility operating costs, lower fuel costs, lower wear and tear on vehicles, and alignment and operating procedures with other cities, particularly with Public Works and Electric. Results of the change. One, community needs. The extended hours have provided more opportunity for residents. However, usage has been mixed. On average, fewer than ten people per week visits City Hall before nine A M. or after five P M., with most visits occurring between eight A M. and nine A M. Two, operational efficiency. Although anticipated, the extra hours to work on projects in the field and in the office has been a huge, has been, I did not read that, been a bigger benefit than expected. It has allowed for more focused uninterrupted time. In the field, it has resulted in many projects not being left unfinished overnight or the weekend. In the office, it has allowed staff more time to work on projects for several hours without interruption. It has also allowed an extra hour or more at the end of the day to tie up loose ends or prepare for the next project or day. Final benefit that is hard to quantify is the creation of a false sense of urgency. By not working Fridays, it has actually motivated staff to work more efficiently, knowing there's one less day to put the work off. Three, staff recruitment, retention, and morale. This is the biggest success of the change to a four-day work week. Staff morale has skyrocketed. Staff are able to use the extra day to schedule and complete personal tasks without asking for time off, resulting in more productivity. The four-day work week has been a great tool in recruiting for the position of the utility technician, finance clerk, finance director, and working foreman, and now the utilities director. Both new and long-term staff have appreciated the schedule, which allows time to complete personal tasks and their stay off. Staff who travel into Cascade Lock save time and fuel on one day less of travel, or lack of Friday traffic. Staff have not received any concerns or complaints from residents, business partners, or vendors via in-person email, phone, or social media that not being open Friday has caused a disruption to services. A complaint or concern we continually receive is to improve our digital offers and require less in-person processes, i.e. account setup. Current council concerns and discussions. During the informal discussions that current council has had on City Hall operations, three major points slash concerns have come up. One, number of days City Hall is open to public. Two, remote work arrangements. Three, number of days staff are physically in the office. There appears to be general agreement among council that City Hall should be open to the public five days a week. Anecdotal data suggests that the extended hours did not see any significant increase in foot and phone traffic at City Hall. However, there's also data that the city saw minimal traffic on Fridays and zero complaints from all stakeholders. Councils also discussed the effectiveness of remote work within City Hall operations. There is general consensus to reduce or eliminate remote work. The position in question, Finance Director, is currently eighty-five to ninety percent remote, a condition approved during recruitment at the end of twenty twenty-four, and a major factor in attracting applicants. However, based on the current needs of the city and and the city administrator agrees, the remote work needs to be reduced to ensure work is getting done properly. Final item, number of days staff are in the office, remains the most divisive among council. Returning to a five-day work week would require substantial administrative work, including updates to the employee handbook and Cessell payroll settings. Options for council consideration. Option one, operational hours and staff schedules stay as they currently are. City Hall open to the public, seven thirty A M. to six P M. Monday through Thursday. Staff would maintain the current four-ten schedule of seven thirty to six thirty, Monday through Thursday, with a thirty-minute lunch break. Pros, continue high staff morale and a tool to recruit for high-level candidates. Cons, possible exposure to overpen for Public Works and Electric staff. Option two, City Hall would be open to the public from nine A M. to five P M. Monday through Thursday. Staff would maintain the current four-ten schedule with offset workdays to ensure coverage of all five days. Remote work would need to be drastically reduced or eliminated to ensure effective coverage. Pros, continue high staff morale and a tool to recruitment for high-level candidates. City Hall is open five days a week. Cons, loss of extended hours for residents who work out of town, difficult to ensure good coverage with three front office staff. Some staff will need to adjust their schedule. Option three, City Hall would be open to the public nine A M. to five P M. Monday through Friday. Staff would return to additional five-eight schedule. Eight A M. to five P M., five days per week with a one-hour lunch break. Pros, City Hall open to public five days a week. Cons, a deep cut in staff morale, loss of recruitment retention tool, loss of work efficiency. Several employees who recruited and took a job based off the four-day work week schedule may result in loss of employees or candidates. There are many other options that we could, that we could include to reduce our, there are many other options we could include to open City Hall to the public, examples being close to the public Fridays, but staff isn't in the office, like Stevenson, or nine A M. to noon and one to four, Monday through Friday, like Moplin. So there's, there's, the three I presented are kind of the, the top options of keeping what we have in our past hours we've used, but that we could slice and dice this so many different ways. So it's really up to council. Implementation timeline. Any decision by council will require two to three months of preparatory work before changes take effect. This will allow time for updates to employee handbook, Cessell payroll system, city website, messaging to residents and stakeholders, and for staff to adjust appointments or other personal commitments. Office hours for the city administrator will switch to Monday through Thursday, eight A M. to five P M. And Friday from eight A M. to three at City Hall, unless otherwise directed by council.
And just want to clarify, on option two, you read nine to five Monday through Thursday, but it is, it is Monday through Friday, correct?
No.
It's so done.
Oh, no. Option. Oh, did I say Thursday?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Monday through Friday. Yes, sorry.
Want to clarify that?
Yeah.
It looks like somebody needs to let in.
Is that one not joined? Is that, I was looking?
Oh, that's me. I, when I create them, I invite myself to them.
Oh, okay.
All right, Courtney.
Just one, I got a couple of questions and then clarifying question. Operational efficiency on the first page, thirty to sixty minutes mobilize and demobilize each day. That means thirty to six, sixty minutes to mobilize and thirty to sixty minutes to demobilize?
Yeah, yeah, depends on what the work is, where they're working.
And then on the second page, additional benefits included lower facility operating costs and alignment and operating procedures with other cities, particularly with Public Works and Electric. What, what other cities are running on a four-ten that we operate with?
It's mostly on the Public Works and Electric Department side.
But not with other cities?
There are some other cities where the admin staff is four-ten. It's not a city, but the most prominent one I can think of is North Wosco P U D. Their entire operation is Monday through Thursday. Admin staff, field staff, everybody.
And we work closely with them?
Not really. We're a mutual aid partner. We don't work close with them.
Okay, so, so that's just kind of in the point.
The closest one I would say would be Stevenson across the river, where they're only open to the public Monday through Thursday.
Yeah, and then on second page, operational efficiency is allowed for more focused uninterrupted time. Can you expand on that a little bit? How is there, how is there more uninterrupted time?
It really is, for the most part, those early morning and the, the extra hour at the end. We did not get the increase in foot traffic we expected. So it really gives staff really an hour in the morning and anywhere for, that's an hour and a half at the end of the day to really focus and finalize those projects.
Is that why option two, you have it set to be for the City Hall to be open for an eight-hour day while staff is here for an hour?
That's part of it, yes, yeah.
And then is it an option to have staff here for a ten-hour day and, you know, with the offset work schedules to be able to change, you know, adjust option two to have it be a ten-hour day and people here for ten hours?
For the City Hall to be open ten hours a day?
Yeah.
Yes, the problem with that, I think it was in one of the councilor's emails, I don't remember which one now, is those offset days were not, the entire crew is here, which is most likely Monday and Friday. It would leave one person by themselves at the end of the day from five to six. Because if we're, we're open ten hours, there's got to be somebody here to cover part of the morning and then part of the night. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you're saying when people don't?
Or no, maybe I'm getting, sorry, maybe I'm getting my schedules mixed up. Sorry, I'm thinking of five eights, not four tens. My, my bad. Sorry. Go ahead.
So, so would it, would, would that be possible to have City Hall open for a ten-hour day and have the standard four-ten schedules for people? Because you already said that people don't really come in the first couple hours, first hour and the last couple hours.
Yeah.
That's when you get your uninterrupted time. So to have one person working, would, would it be so much of a burden to have one person in here when that's their uninterrupted time anyway?
No, I, we should be able to do that. I'd have to. I haven't mapped that out, but I don't see why, off the top of my head, why it wouldn't work.
Yeah, that's one question for now. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I personally wrote out there. I don't want to see the staff go to five eights at all. I want them to keep their four-ten schedule, and I would like to see it rotated. I don't know if having City Hall open ten hours a day versus eight hours a day, if that helps with people being able to get in here more or not. But I definitely see where staff would like having four tens, because I've worked a four-ten schedule and it, it does make a better family and better lifestyle and give you time away, which is good to refresh and not get burned out. So I would never, I don't want to look to take them from the four-ten schedule. But I do want to see us be here for the community. Do you have something?
Yeah. I think my, my pushback on the four tens was the lack of some critical communication missed on a Friday. And specifically about the ARCA reporting issue where critical communication was received on a Thursday, but we didn't have a chance to really respond until late on Monday, and the deadline was Tuesday to get the, so I, I think that the point that Courtney brought up, but I think that the city of the river is on five eights. Counting.
Oh, the city, they.
Talking admin staff, not public works.
The city, they did a change during COVID, and they were short-staffed. They didn't really, they didn't have staff to operate, and I'd have to double-check what it is. I can do that really quick. But they're, they're, they're different. They're not.
But I, I think having some alignment with the people that you would be interfaced with.
Yes.
And I do think that there's some real validity to this. I'm not sure you guys have heard about this, but the idea that like, there's always talk about multitasking, you know, and we always talk about how you can multitask. And all the research says you really can't multitask. You can only do one thing at a time. And so when you get interrupted, it really does detract from your attention and focus, then the reset continually, it does affect your efficiency and productivity when you're doing office administrative tasks. Especially if you're doing something really detail-oriented like payroll, you can really throw things through, you know, make a mess.
Yeah, I, I will definitely say when I was four-ten, that five to six o'clock hour, when I knew I wasn't getting any emails, like I knew I could focus. Because the way the world operates, as soon as an email comes in, you're like, ooh, little, little squirrel, I need to check what that squirrel's doing, and it will throw you off. Just to make sure again, so I'm not missing anything. So I think knowing that, that five to six hour you're working and you're really not going to get interrupted. And it was for me, it's very helpful.
And I can totally commiserate with you. I, I, when I've had jobs where my office was the first office in the door, and like all of my staff, when they come in, I'd always pop in to say hello. But I'd have to literally take my laptop and just go hang out in the basement at the city work resort. Because I could just get some uninterrupted time and get things done. So, you know, I guess I'd be really curious to, I guess, kind of lay out our concerns, and I'd like to hear some suggestions or recommendations from staff about how we can maybe address that and support them and help you, you know, feel like you can be more successful, more productive, and staff morale while still addressing maybe some of the concerns from council.
Is that it for here?
Yeah.
Bernard?
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of things. Well, first question. Mr. Bennett, how, how many of staff live in town versus don't live in town? I was just trying to go through my head, and it feels like most of us are in town. What is your count? Do you have a count of that?
Um, the majority of staff does, right now. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I have a ten, eight, at least fifty percent. I'm trying to think of, there's a couple in the fire department, one in Public Works, one in Electric that technically doesn't live in the city, but is just on the outside of city limits. So I guess that would count as local. Obviously, I don't. Finance Director is not local, hence the remote work. I'd say it's seventy percent are local.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the, 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 the fuel and time aspect, it's really the minority of staff that is burdened by that. The majority of staff, their commute is five minutes, you know, or maybe even less. So I think that's a concern, but to me, it's a, it's not a significant concern and, and something that's not weighing heavily on my assessment of, of, of this issue. The next thing I'll say is, when we, I, I just want for the council, if you guys didn't go through some of the questions I asked, when, when the city changed from, you know, a five-day work week to a four-day week, work week, it, it, it just, it, it accrued additional benefits to being a, an employee with the city. So when you do that, you're, you go from ten-hour days to eight-hour days. So now your holidays, you get a ten-hour day off. You don't get, it's not eight hours. Does everyone understand that? So every, so we, we have like, you know, X holidays, it's like ten or twelve holidays. Those days are now, you, you, you get an additional two hours of, of compensation in result of that. So, look, you know, I see a city that's very challenged by its work requirements. And I don't, I want to go through all of them, but I'm sure a lot of you guys can think of the challenges we face as a city. So for us to be giving away hours of work is, is for me tough to reconcile. And then the next thing that I learned is that, you know, Fourth of July is a floating, that day floats around the, the calendar. So if Fourth of July falls on a, on a Friday, then they don't, it's like, oh, they're off on Friday. So, no, they, that now turns into a four-day weekend for them. Instead of, in, in the old system, it falls on a, on a, on a, on a, a Fri-, a Fri-, or a, sorry. No, it would fall on a, no, falls on a Friday, okay, never mind. But if it falls on a Saturday and they're adding a day, then you get, again, you're, you're taking a, a ten-hour day instead of an eight-hour day. So, again, as someone who sees a, a city that's resource-constrained, all these things are a struggle for me. And so where I, where I see deficiencies in our, in our productivity, it's more in the administrative staff than, than the field staff. Now, I, I fully acknowledge, like, City Light, because they've been understaffed, they have a lot of work, they have a lot of to-dos on their list. But I don't think that's a scheduling problem. I think that's just a staffing problem. And once we get the staff set up, I feel like either leaving them on four tens, or my preference would be a nine-eighty schedule. And in that format, you would, they would get off every other Friday. And we could switch that between Public Works and City Light. So at any Fri-, any given Friday, you would either have a Public Works crew there or a City Light crew there to address, you know, issues that came up from staff or what have you. So, and then, you know, what, what, I guess what I would like to, you know, I know it's, it's troublesome to to make this change because Cassell and, and this and that. But I would like council to come up with an agreement, agree to new schedule. And then we kind of say, look, let's run a test run for six to twelve months and see if we're happy with the results. And, and then make an assessment. The professional literature I read says there's no verdict that a four-ten leaves a more productivity versus a five-eight, you know, a five-day work week. I haven't seen any strong evidence taking one side or the other. I know what I see are challenges in our, in our, in our city, and I feel like making some of these staff changes will address those. And to me, it's clearly we need it, especially in the front office. And so that's what I would like to see as we try to move forward on this.
Anybody else got anything?
Are we talking about, does the, what does the fire department work?
They're their own oddball. They're forty-eight.
We're not really discussing.
They're completely set. Yeah, they're not really part of this discussion.
So where does that bring that seventy percent?
Yeah.
If we're not getting fire department.
Um. And, and probably. Yeah, that probably puts in more like eighty percent, probably slightly higher. I, I have to, I don't remember if that meant exactly who's who.
So you have one in Public Works that don't live in town, and then two admins that don't live in town. All Electric lives in town because he's on top. So you have two, three people that don't live in Cascade Locks.
And, and for me, yes, for, for the current staff that don't live in town, it's a benefit, but it's also for future recruitment, especially the high-end or the, the director level positions. Housing is limited in Cascade Locks. I know there are more houses being built currently. But I, I don't think we're going to get director-level positions to relocate from where they're currently at in Portland or Gresham or Longview to Cascade Locks, unless they're moving from across the state or somewhere.
All right, Bernard, did you have another question or comment?
Yeah, just one small thing. Look, I, I acknowledge the need for creating an environment that, for high morale for staff. I think that's a critical piece that council should be concerned with and certainly city administrator. But what I also would, would offer is that when work that is, you know, dragging us down is not getting done, that's demoralizing. And the fact that, again, we're behind three auditor, three audits cannot be a, a, a positive impact or, or factor in coming to work at City Hall. And I think part of the reason we are is because we're not having five-day-a-week presence in these key staff jobs at the, in the administrative office. And so I want to get that resolved. And I, I'd like to think when our, our financial house is in, in proper order, morale is going to improve dramatically. I know my morale as a city councillor will be, will be, will be much better. I'd like to think it'd be the same for staff.
And I disagree, only because I think working four tens does lift staff morale and stuff, and they can, like, you have one day to clean house, one day for appointments, and one day for yourself. I think our problem with getting stuff done in the office is because of our remote position that needs to be in-house, and that we have a city administrator that is working four tens. City administrator never got to work a forty-hour work week since I've been paying attention to council. They worked whatever it needed to be done to get the job done. And so that's my input on it. Anybody else got anything? Pete?
I would just expand that to say, I think that that's always an aggravation from a salary position in general, is your work, your free labor. That's how, every time I work, you know, things need to get done. All the stuff that falls through the cracks fell on my shoulders and management to make sure it got done, and I was responsible for those results, so.
Anybody else?
Well, I think, and I, the remote work, I think that's, I think that's like the biggest, the biggest run. I think the four tens would work better if it was four tens here, not whatever, whatever it is. The only problem I see with the four ten is that, I mean, in making it be five, five days a week is that you're going to have, you're going to have shorts. You're going to shorten on Monday, you're going to shorten on Friday, so you're going to have three really productive days. And one person having to do two persons' work on the Mondays and the Fridays.
Is that Monday and Friday shorty, Jordan, based on three people being in the office or four?
It's four people, but one position. It's, I'm three and a half. There are four people, not putting myself, four, four.
Yeah, not.
Four administrative staff, but one of them, their job is not to cover the front desk. Their job is internal operations, H R, recording functions, I T liaison, not to cover the front desk. They are backup. Backup, their third-string backup. That's not their primary function. And the way that would be structured, they would have to step up on one of those days to be the main backup, to cover lunch breaks, to cover regular breaks if something happens.
All right, Bernard, did you have another one?
Yeah, just so, to, for clarification. So council member Pruitt, when you were discussing that, was that just option two you were referring to?
Was it? Well, yeah, I mean, if you want it open five days and you want, but you want it just only to stay at the four-ten schedule, you're still going to have one day at, at each end of the week where you're going to be lesser staff. And so somebody isn't going to be as productive because they are going to be doing the work of the person who's not there for that day.
And, but that, that setup would result, would be in, in, in a, an option two, not a five-day-a-week, eight-hour-a-day schedule. Is that correct?
Well, it would be four-ten. It would still be four-ten. So you have.
I understand, yeah.
One group of people working four-ten Monday through Thursday, and then somebody else working Tuesday through Friday.
Correct.
And Monday, and the Monday and the Friday, you're going to be, you're going to have lesser staff that are going to have to cover for the others that aren't working on those days so that everybody can have their four-ten.
Correct, thank you. Yeah, no, I, I think that is a, a, a key challenge to option two. And again, it's not an issue if you're five days a week. The, the other thing that I, I want to mention about option two is that ideally, the directors would be in there five days a week. So our, our finance clerk, our finance, a, a finance director, and So our, our finance clerk, our finance, a finance director, and there's days where, well, yeah. They're, they're, they're trying to manage a team, and that team is being broken up every week. And I just, I, I think that, that makes, that's problematic for management. So, yeah, I, I, I really, we'll see where council is, but I, I hope we can, we can consider a five-day-a-week solution.
I, I just want to make sure that we all understand that option two, people are here for ten hours a day, but the office is only open eight hours a day.
But then you have a shortage.
But you're closed.
Yeah, they've got an hour on the front and an hour on the back. An hour and a half on the front, and then an hour on the back. But as the city administrator has already said, that, that time is already uninterrupted time. There, there's already a lack of foot traffic during those hours.
Yeah, we did not get nearly the foot traffic we thought we'd like.
So I'm, I'm wondering why, I mean, if we're not having people come in regularly, why not be available just in case? You know, yeah, I understand the idea of, of, you know, people feeling like they have a solid amount of uninterrupted time, but also if that time is already interrupted, you know, for the most part, then, then why not have it be open? I, I like a four-ten schedule. I'm biased, because I work a four-ten schedule right now, and going from a six-ten schedule to a four-ten schedule is really nice. I, I understand that one day a week, having that for a long time, I wasn't, you know, I wasn't making doctor's appointments because didn't want to miss work, and having that, that taking away that burden of, of having to choose between, you know, feeding my family and, and making a doctor's appointment. Eased up on my life quite a bit. And, and Bernard, to, to point out, you know, the, the Republic Works and everybody, a, a ten-hour day for mobilization and demobilization is an absolute legitimate thing.
Yeah.
You know, at office work, not, not so much, but out in the field, ramping up, getting all the tools, making a plan for the day, that, you know, having a, having a ten-hour day, it doesn't become more productive from that side.
So let me just see where we're standing so far, make sure I'm following. We're going toward like four-ten? The four-tens, are we, but for City Hall, I mean, would we be satisfied if City Hall was open ten hours a day, Monday through Thursday? Or are you guys talking about having it open the ten hours, Monday through Friday?
We, we have that little graph that was added into an email, right? It kind of showed the, the staggered.
Okay.
I just want to clarify, because I thought you brought up a real kind of a sensitive issue, and I appreciate you kind of sharing your personal story, but if someone needs to take, you know, their kids to the doctor, or they need to go to the doctor, they can get that time off, right?
Oh, yes, of course, yeah. There's sick time in PTO.
There's sick time in PTO, so I, I don't feel like that would be necessarily, you know, run to the bank might be a different situation, you know, but I think, you know, doctor's appointments and things would be able to be accommodated. I know in my head, I, I was in favor of keeping things four-ten for the Public Works and Utilities Departments. Electric, I think that it's really beneficial for them, for the reasons we've already discussed. I don't see the benefit necessarily the same way for the office staff. And I think there's a ton of value in having everybody working the same schedule. I think having, you know, half the team here on Monday through Thursday, and other people Tuesday or Friday, that can be frustrating if the person you need to talk to isn't here.
So we can agree that we're Public Works and Electric, we're not four, we leave them at four-ten, that's correct? Is that, we're pretty all?
More about Bernard.
Bernard's actually giving the nine-eighties, but that was a good.
Hold on just a second, Bernard. I want to be able to give these staff a chance to, they're here, and I want to hear them too. So I want to make sure we leave time for them to be able to speak. Tiffany?
Okay, so, so when they have their, their day on call, when they're on call, are they on call for ten hours or eight hours?
They're on, when they're on call, they're on call twenty-four-seven. I mean, they're.
Okay.
For seven days.
Yeah, and, and right now, Public Works actually is staggered. Two of the three are Monday through Thursday, one of them is Tuesday through Friday. Just, just to have somebody there if something comes up on a Friday. It does limit, to an extent, our exposure to overtime.
And then my other question, I, I mean, and a reminder, you know, the port is four-ten now too, so. And then how many people have really heard from citizens that they want the office open on Friday?
I think what I've really heard is that it's not available, so I've it being open earlier since they're here, and and that might be the answer, I don't know.
I mean, personally, there have been times when I've had a question on my utility bill on a Friday, and I've been able to come to get it. You know, I'm just waiting Monday.
I think everybody knows that they have to wait till Monday. Yeah. Kind of like our emails, when we send out an email, we have to wait till Monday. We can't do that. Okay, Bernard, do you real quick, and then I want the staff to share?
Yes, just to be very clear, for field staff, I'm supportive, my first priority would be a, a nine-eighty, but my second would be a four-ten. I acknowledge the efficiencies the city administrator reported on, and I, I, he's, that, that's a valid point, and that's a good reason for them to have an extended day schedule, so they can be more productive in their work. No issue at all. Again, there's a laundry list of, of City Light things to do, but that's not because of the schedule, it's because of the staffing, so. But on the flip side, well, I'm not going to repeat myself. But that's, that's, I have no issue with the field staff staying either the same, or my preference would be nine-eighty. Either of those is fine with me. It's the office staff that I would like to see Monday through Friday in the office.
Okay.
And present, not remote.
No, no, so no, no remote?
Correct.
Okay.
Only on an exception basis.
Yeah.
The rule should be they, they come to work.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, I agree. So Sheldon, would you like to share how you feel about your four-ten schedule, or?
A little bit of the four-ten schedule, and what you're saying about the mode, but the mode is very true. I also want to kind of go back to like two years ago, we did a little, I don't know if this has been talked about or not, but you need to put a camera in there, and on Fridays, what? Maybe two people.
On average, it's one per day walking.
Yeah. And then I think staying open later, because a lot of people work five days a week. So if you're open till six, they can come in after work and take care of your business. Other than that, the morale, it's, I think it's a big, it's going to be a it's going to be shitty for, for two years, now to go back to that. And I understand some of the things Bernard was saying about the legitimacy of how things work, but I don't know, I mean, in two years, I don't, I think it's been good, and I haven't ever heard anybody complain about it. You know, there's people that come up and talk to us about it, and ask us how we like it. I've asked them, what do you think of it? And they think it's great. I haven't heard any negative. I heard there were some people reporting to council that, that had some issues. But, you know, if anything, I didn't know, go ahead and look at it.
I mean, you can't believe, you can't make everybody happy.
Sure, but I mean, you take a handful of people out of it.
Yeah.
How many, you know, five hundred people that pay bills here or whatever? I mean, that's, that's not.
Would you have anything you wanted to share?
Yeah, well, first, I'm here to support my new crew.
Welcome.
You know, support them around, keep them around, because I think it's been a little bit of an upset. But I, I only heard positive things, like when I tell people, "Oh, yeah, I work four-ten," they're like, "Wow, that's awesome, that's amazing." So it is really a huge pull for recruitment, future recruitment. And, yeah, people are very happy for me. Also, I think, well, the, the office is, is slow. And it, and it can be slow, so I, I don't know. I can't really see being open on Friday being that much more of a pull. Like, we get so much done the four days that we work. These ladies work really hard, by the way. That, I just, I don't know, I just can't see it being a, a huge value. Another thing I want to say is that we're really working on pushing for things to be more electronically available for the residents of Cascade Locks. And we're looking into different software, that Cassell supports that we're not utilizing, that, you know, could potentially be really favorable for us and the residents, so they can go online and do their stuff, and they don't have to call, they're in the office, you know? So this is trying to push us forward to be more in 2025.
Before we go any further, I'm going to see if you guys have any questions for anyone as they go. So do you have any questions for anybody? No? Okay, okay. Would you like to share?
I would.
Please.
And I do have some information to write.
Yeah, please do. Thank you, Carrie, for preparing some.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's right. Um, I, I appreciate that, really, the opportunity to be able to speak, and I thank you for that tonight. I would like to thank Councilmember Pruitt, because she did come and ask, "How do you like the four-ten?" You know, "Is it working for you?" And I really appreciate that. But I was very disturbed that the council was considering changing the hours of operation for City Hall staff, because I don't understand the reasoning behind the consideration, at least from my point. I haven't had people come up and complain and be upset that we weren't open on Friday, other than an occasional commentant of, "I forgot you were not open on Friday when I came to pay my bill." If there were any unhappy customers, I will tell you, I would have heard. People have no qualms calling up and complaining. And that would have been an issue. I don't see that working a four-day-a-week has affected our work in a negative way. In fact, it's provided extended hours for us even to get things done without being interrupted, such as, "Oh, I didn't finish this today, I guess I'll try tomorrow," you know? It's actually given us more time and a greater opportunity to get things done in a timely manner. Now that staff has, staff has been on a four-day work week for two years, we all have adjusted our schedules as such. I have actually made commitments to my daughter to provide childcare on Friday for her. And now I schedule most all my appointments on a Friday. So Monday through Thursday, I, I'm here. It's very rare that I'm missing work for a doctor's appointment or any other type of business that I might need to do. I can do it on Friday, I'm here Monday through Thursday. It's frustrating for staff that every time there is a turnover in the council for the mayor position, we constantly have to adjust. I, this constant change in procedure and whatever is going on with the council and the changes they want to make really does produce an unhappy workplace. From what I've read from the job descriptions forced, the city administrator is that he or she is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the city. And since the city administrator is here every day, they know firsthand what is and what isn't working. And I feel like the city administrator should be the one managing the employees, or the one to say, "Hey, this isn't working" just for the fact that they're here and they know. I, I hope that the city council will reconsider that changing us back to five days a week, because it does mean that we all have to now change our schedule. I, I, I feel like asking us to do that is really just mean-spirited. And especially if only some of us employees have to go back to five days a week. So I, I'm hoping that you will choose not to change it, and I do appreciate your consideration in this matter, and thank you for letting me speak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bernard, have any questions?
You can't be.
Okay. So I put together some stuff and, and actually contacted other cities, and their schedules kind of all over the place.
Thank you.
But one of the things that I wanted to point out is that in October twenty-three, we did the, you know, there was research, everything was done. And based on that, we went on the four-ten, we've been doing it for two years, there have not been any complaints. We all know, would have been blasted all over Facebook, and we definitely would have heard about it at City Hall. It has worked. I, we are all public servants, we know that we serve our public. We all took these jobs knowing that we are public servants, and we're going to do the best job that we can do for our community. And I would venture to say that any one of the employees that work for this city, if, if there were, if there was a need for our community, if that need was presented to us, I think we would be the first ones to step up. I don't think council would have had to have stepped in and said, "Hey, let's change our schedule." I think we would have done that. I seriously think that. I want to thank you for allowing us to speak during work session, that's not normally how that works, but I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for listening and considering our request. I would also just want to comment on a couple of the comments that I heard. Not to argue, but the audit not being done and behind is not due to I don't know how to, I guess I don't know how to say it. It's not because we're not here five days a week. If the downstairs are here at different times than us, meaning they're not here on Friday, what do you think the front office takes care of? Utility stuff, mostly. Well, there's nobody here on Friday. Well, there's one Public Works guy. I mean, I just see that as weird. I heard a comment made about city administrator working just forty hours, not sure how that comment was made. The city administrator does not just put in a forty-hour week. He absolutely does not. I also heard a comment about salaried people and working, yes, you're responsible for getting the job done. Yes, you will work and do whatever it takes to get that job done. But I don't believe that salary means use and abuse, working twenty-four-seven. I absolutely do not. I don't know about the art of thing and the, not the email being taken care of on a Friday, but the city administrator changed his schedule to work on Fridays and answer, hopefully, email that has something to do with those kinds of things. And I will add or agree with Carrie that it would be very disappointing. I don't think that staff should have to rotate their schedules to be here on a Friday. uh, to be here on a Friday when it's not proven to be necessary. Uh, and I would just ask again that you consider leaving our schedules as is.
Jordan, did you have anything? Um, what, I think I wanna kind of sum up everything I've heard, um, and we're almost out of time, kinda chart a path for here. It sounds like council's concerns are mainly regarding uh, senior staff, which would be city administrator and department heads, not being in the office five days a week. Not so much for our field staff or our front desk staff, more around high-level staff and making sure communication with our partners, whether it be the city of Hood River, the county, and state agencies, federal agencies that do work Fridays, missing key communications. It also sounds like the, the, and the thought that we had complaints from residents, or not being open on Friday was a, was a detriment to residents, that seems to have been cleared up, or maybe I'm misinterpreting everything that's been said. Um, so I really think the key goes back to council's concerns are, are high-level staff, again, the city administrator, department head, being here in person five days. Am I correct in my kind of summarizing of that, or am I wrong?
So high-level staff, that would be city administrator, finance director, department heads, so.
So, so myself, administrative services director, finance director, um, um, emergency service director, which is the fire chief, and then hopefully utility director, I don't think so.
But what do you guys think?
I think our, I hear and I've heard from council about the remote work, that's not working for us.
Yeah, sorry, I, that was kinda getting that remote work.
The remote work is not working for our city, it's not just not working for us, it's not working for our city. It needs to, so we can get stuff done. And then, Pete?
Yeah, just speaking for myself, and I guess the issue with the, the, I guess I don't really care whether it's a four day, we, we work week, I wanna, I mean, and honestly, talking with, I remember, I think I'm the only one on council that was here at the time when we implemented that, and I remember checking my staff during the probationary period, like, "How's this working?" Ten hours is a long time, sitting at a desk, you know, you, you like it? They love it, you know, like, I, none, none of the, all the feedback I got from staff was that they really appreciated the change in schedule. The issue I have is with the results and where, kind of where we are with the city, and so I appreciate your, your thoughts on that, that the, we're not behind on the audits, they've only worked in four days a week. But I do think that there's some, I guess, frustration being lack of ability to get answers to questions with the council packing on Fridays. The ARPA reporting, which we've already discussed, we've got this penalty from OED, I don't know what caused that. There are things that make me, well, you know, I guess those, if those were not issues, I wouldn't have concerns about the four tens. And I don't know that that necessarily falls on staff, I think that your point is valid, and I think it, it's really the city administrator and director of finance, those are the issues we're really struggling in, and those, I guess, are my areas where my concerns are. I think Bernard's points are entirely valid, though, that the holidays are now worth twenty percent more, uh, than they were before, and I think that that's again, it wouldn't be an issue if things were not falling behind, but because things were falling behind, this is now turning into an issue.
I've not had an issue with a four ten, I, I can see how it can work, I can see how it can be, uh, three days off on, on a work week is, is a fantastic thing, and it has just been the remote work, and I think it's the remote working is the big, the big issue, and I think it's just trickling down into, and, you know, it was said the city administrator should be the one to say this isn't working, and the unfortunate thing is that you haven't figured that out, and all of our angst has come to you to have this discussion, because it ha, it hasn't been figured out, and you know, I think that that's probably part of the work plan, I guess, but it's just that I, I don't mind the four ten, I'm not hurting anyone else. I can, I would love to have three days off on the weekend. It's the remote working that's really, I think, bugging up the whole, the whole issue. I don't wanna stagger it so that there's less staff on Monday and less staff on Monday, 'cause I think that's just gonna cut into the production, the work production, and make everybody jump through hoops, hoops to make their schedule work. I, it's just, I, we, just, remote working is just got to be off of the table, it's just, it gotta be off the table.
That's not working. Did you have something there again?
Yes, I've been quiet a lot for a minute, now it's time to speak up.
Yeah, it's four minutes.
Oh, I got four minutes, okay. Well, this is my thought. I think we should leave it at four tens, no remote work at all, and staff works as a team. This is what is not happening, and as a previous employee, we've been through, we worked as a team, and that's what you need. So I'm for four tens, those on Fridays, no remote work.
Okay.
Courtney.
I hope none of you feel unappreciated, we, we understand, and, and I, I totally hear you when you say you feel like, you know, you're getting jerked around by different council members, you get a change of people and they wanna go this way, and a change of people and they wanna go that way, unfortunately, that is the nature of a, of, of public service, but also this is, this is in response to us saying that something's not working, because we're not in the office every day, we, we only know how to look at what we can see. And, and so I'm so glad that you guys are here.
Thank you very much for coming and helping.
We, we really appreciate it, um, I'm, I'm glad that we all kind of in, agree with four tens.
Four tens.
This thing. Um, we don't, you know, we, we do wanna work together on this, and, and please understand that, that this is just a trying to make stuff right, because three years behind an audit is not working. And if that's a, if that's an issue, a part of it, then, then that makes me very excited.
So I'm gonna summarize real fast, Bernard, you gotta be quick, 'cause I got two minutes.
Yeah, all I was gonna say was, look, if I'm gonna, you know, prioritize these, I think I'm with the mayor that I'd like to see those directors that the city administrator listed off be in five days a week, and if this council is okay with the remaining of staff going to four tens, I'm okay with that. I'm old-fashioned, I apologize to the staff, I, I grew up in a world of five days a week. I feel like organizations work better when they do that. And so I'm gonna, that's, I think forever going to be my default position. But if I can't get that, then my next, uh, next priority would have the directors in, as mentioned, five days a week.
I think council was city administrator and finance director and fi, whatever it takes to get the job done, and everybody else stayed at the four tens, and is that what I understood? Am I right? 'Cause I don't think city recorder needs to come in.
Shouldn't have to be there. Look, I, but I don't, I don't understand how that would work, because I'm sure some of them, their job is to look for the things that the director needs, and if they're working on Friday and they're not, then you're gonna have to work.
You're gonna have a lag, I think it needs to stay four tens, but I just think that the remote just needs to go away.
Yeah. I, I.
That's what I think.
So, we're gonna, so what I got is that we're gonna stay the same way, except we're gonna, the remote's gotta stop, because it's not working for our city. We're not getting things done, we need everybody in the office.
We, we're not going against the contract by pulling out on the remote, are we? We are not, no.
Alrighty, so that is good, thank you guys for coming and sharing, we really appreciate it, 'cause we do wanna hear it from you guys, 'cause you are what make the city run.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your hard work. All right, moving on. Little bird.